Live to witness this day. In his speech to the nation on VE Day, President Harry Truman cautioned allies that they must work to finish the war. For that we were still in the process of defeating the Japanese in the Pacific. VE Day marked the end of fighting in Europe. Where tens of millions of service members and civilians had been killed. Some two hundred and fifty thousand US troops lost their lives in the European theater. Tens of thousands of people filled the streets of New York, New Orleans, London, Australia, and other allied nations. There was a massive celebration in Paris. US forces took part in celebrations in France, a nation that had suffered through much of the fighting. Today, memorials around the world mark the events of VE Day. And World War Two and honored those who served and paid the ultimate sacrifice. Including the National World War Two Memorial in Washington DC. We have very few veterans left who fought in World War Two. But some continues to take part in reunions and observations to mark VE Day. BFW Post forty eight twenty has seven World War Two veterans to this day. Most of them served in Europe. Men like Travis Ferris, Horace Haver, Fred Mew, Daniel Miller. Ray Smith, Ignace Treyhan, and Roy Culber. Roy Culber lives right here in Groves. And he's related to Lucian Adams. The only Medal of Honor winner from Port Arthur in World War Two. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other reports? Move on to citizen comments? Any citizen comments? All right. We're gonna go a little bit out of order at this time. So we're going to uh. Hear and deliberate on the presentation to the Groves Chamber of Commerce Mother of the Year for twenty twenty five. And the mayor's proclamation declaring May twelfth twenty twenty five as Catherine Giedro Day. Please do. Did you have anything?
Offer to the mayor proclamation, I, Chris Form, my virtue to the authority vested in the native mayor. City of Groves, Texas can hereby proclaim May twelfth twenty twenty five as Catherine Giedro Day. In the city of Groves, Texas, and urge each and every citizen of our city to recognize and honor Catherine Giedro. As a twenty twenty five Mother of the Year in the community of Groves as brought forth by the Groves Chamber of Commerce. That's the only where I witnessed my hand and the seal of the city of Groves is twelfth day of May twenty twenty five. Congratulations.
Item eight, be deliberate an act to approve the minutes of the April twenty eighth twenty twenty five city council meeting.
I'll make a motion with deliberate an act to approve the minutes of the April twenty eighth twenty twenty five city council meeting.
Motion in a second to deliberate an act to approve the minutes of the April twenty eighth twenty twenty five city council meeting. Any questions? No questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Pro Tim Canitas. Councilmember Holmes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gay. Councilmember McAdams. Motion passes. Item nine, deliberate an act on a resolution authorizing the submittal of a motor vehicle crime prevention authority. Fiscal year twenty twenty six grant to purchase automated license plate readers. And designate the city marshal as the authorized officer.
Make a motion with deliberate an act on the resolution authorizing the. Submittal of a motor vehicle crime prevention authority. Fiscal year twenty twenty six grant to purchase automated license plate readers and designate the city marshal as the authorized officer.
I'll say.
A motion in a second to deliberate an act on a resolution authorizing the submittal of a motor vehicle crime prevention authority fiscal year twenty twenty six grant. To purchase automated license plate readers and designate the city marshal as an authorized authorized officer. Any questions? Marshall.
Mayor, council, thank all for this opportunity this evening to present another grant application. City manager, do we have the printer? Do you have the slides still? Neither.
I have them in PDF.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, hopefully we can at least uh look through them in your packets. I don't know if you have any of it in front of you. Yeah, I've got one printout. Steve Kansas.
No, they have PDF.
Give you. Uh, tonight I respectfully request the city council approval of a resolution. And this is to the Texas DMV. It's specifically a group called the Texas Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority. Uh, it is a label twenty twenty six, but this is the fiscal year twenty five twenty six. Uh, that first slide with a grant application summary will start there. Thank you. Uh, what this grant is going to do is going to assist our department in acquiring and deploying automated license plate readers. And basically what these are, they're they're camera systems focused in on uh vehicle plates descriptors. Uh, they're stationary. And uh, you put them in specific segments of ingress egress into the city. And they're used for investigative purposes. Um. And what this does especially today, and this grant, its its primary focus is catalytic converter theft prevention. Uh, we've been plagued by catalytic theft, uh, uh, catalytic catalytic converter thefts. Let's say that three times fast. Uh, in the past, and though those numbers are declining, the state is still recognized that as a as a major issue. And we do have some uh some data to justify our uh submitted with this grant as well. Uh, but as you can see. The total grants, uh, the project seeks seventy six thousand dollars is the total funding. Uh, this particular grant uh does require a resolution and a twenty percent city match. The proposal supports a continuation and expansion of our vehicle crime prevention strategy that we've enacted thus far. Uh, we have a prior ALPR grant uh pending. It's through Homeland Security. Uh, I've spoken with you in the past about it. We've got resolution passed for it. The problem is a lot of the funding that's occurring in the country right now. Um, it's not looking like that was going to be funded for us. So this particular grant is to either supplement or on its own. Handle the ALPR strategy that we hope to uh include in our next fiscal year's strategies. Uh, next slide, please sir. With this particular grant, it'll have the installation of twelve ALPR units. These systems will be integrated into the Beaumont Real Time Crime Center. Will also help us function and coordinate with all of our neighboring agencies that have either similar technology or also. Uh, locked into the real time crime center. This will help us get our foot in the door if that previous grant does not. Or hopefully it supplement whatever we are able to get through that previous grant. And what you do is, and and if you'd like to reference this chart here on your your forms. And this is not to scale. Um, this certainly isn't a strategic look at what we may be utilizing, but what you see there at the bottom left of that image is the intersection of Twin City Highway. And uh, Highway seventy three and the yellow triangles somewhat represent the angles at which some of these. Plate readers would be focused and oriented. And the strategy, especially with the Real Time Crime Center. And they were agencies is this, if a report of catalytic converter theft or any type of motor vehicle theft were to be reported. And entered into this system real time, we will get either information that it's traveled through our city or vice versa. If we're investigating something. And we input documentation or license plate or descriptor of a vehicle that potentially matches. Other agencies would get the same information and we would immediately start interacting and sharing real time. Into where that vehicle may be located, where it may be headed. Both to prevent the theft, to re- re obtain the property, but to uh investigate it further and then and hopefully bring that act into justice. Uh, so they do provide real time alerts. Uh, while targeting catalytic converter theft is a priority. This technology supports a broad spectrum of vehicle related crime. Uh, and prevention even uh anything you can imagine if uh it has to do with uh a vehicle, whether that's an act or plea. Uh, or anything in between. Uh, this is assisted many agencies throughout the state of Texas. Uh, and we hope to be a part of that. Uh, next slide, please. Specifically to the benefits of our community with that enhanced real time intelligence and interagency collaboration. This is really going to help us here locally and assisting neighboring agencies. Uh, it gives you faster suspect identification and improved officer response and safety. It's basically an additional set of officer eyes, right? But you're only paying the cameras pricing and the installation of the of the pole to get what an officer and their surveillance would provide. Uh, now before we get too much further into it, I know I explained a little bit this, uh, a little of this in our last uh interaction with these ALPRs. This isn't like a Big Brother where you. Uh, visually scanning people's faces or anything along those lines. Though these ALPRs are camera systems that do document specifics to these vehicles. It's to the vehicles specifically only. This is uh license plates, decals, descriptors of the vehicles, shape, size. Uh, speeds, things of that nature. Um. Additionally, this technology is adaptable. We use a lot of different areas and this particular grant application that we're going to be submitting also comes along with. An ALPR trailer that is maneuverable and mobile and can be stationed in any type of location or situation. Next slide, please. This is an idea of what it looks like and what it has is two uh opposite directional ALPRs and a three hundred and sixty degree camera. Let's say we had an instance or of a string of burglaries or a string of. Uh, catalytic converters thefts in specific region where a lot of vehicles are parked, let's say. From it, so we could put something like this in that area and give it real time constant. Evaluation deterrent and investigative uh potential with this trailer. So it just continues to supplement all the things we're trying to achieve thus far, real time with. And allows us to interact with agencies around us to share that data and also to receive data that they can share with us. Uh, so this program, next slide, oh, actually I think that might still, yeah, let's stick with this slide just a little bit longer. Uh, it is aligned with NBCPA's mission to prevent uh vehicle vehicular specific theft and catalytic converter theft. Installation of these ALPRs includes appropriate training, allowing our staff and our officers to know everything that they need to know how to utilize it. Uh, same as databases that are shared across the state or federally. You have logins, you have training, you can't use this for personal gain or personal interest. It needs to be assigned to a call for service or a case number where an investigation is ongoing. All of those things are checked through the software. Uh, if you're going to be requesting data, if you're going to be entering data, all those things are timestamped, logged and tracked and automated. Uh, we already have collaboration in place. Uh, and if you watch the news at all. Several agencies around us have really had some major success with this real time crime system. And having this system will not only allow us to share data with it, it also gets our foot in the door, like I've mentioned, to receiving that data. And uh, that's major. It's gonna really, really change how we're able to do the investigative process and the swiftness in which we can do that. Uh, so uh, we're ready to move forward upon approval, uh, with flexible resources to adjust the scope of this spending. Uh, obviously if uh this grant comes in a little bit lower or higher, which was rare, like unlikely. We can scale this process down. So right now we want twelve ALPRs in a trailer. If uh we get a fraction of the grant funding, we'll just scale it down. The minimum for our size agency with the uh eight, the the companies that provide these ALPR services is typically four, minimum of four. Uh, now just to give you some context, a lot of the neighboring agencies that we have around us have twenty plus. So this just puts our foot in the door getting this process started. Now specifically for them's NBCPA's grant. They do allow continuation grants. So if this grant were to continue year after year after year, and we hope that it does. We will be able to apply for continuations to expand, to supplement what we're putting in now. Uh, but of course approval of this resolution is required. We cannot move forward with this grant application without your approval. So please consider it. Uh, if you have any questions at all, I'm happy to assist. Thank you all for your attention.
Marshall, on the continuation grant, uh, if if they don't do a continuation grant, is there a projected cost for annual subscriptions? Uh, hardware, anything that goes along with what we have to do to keep with the updates?
Absolutely. So these specific types of processes that we're seeing, which is a lot of it is subscription based. Because this is a grant driven program. The entities that assist with this or 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 have technology that is allowable in this grant process. They do specifically one year terms, right? So you're not going to obligate yourself to something that you can't handle if a grant were to conclude. So as of right now, this would fund plus the city's match, of course, one full year. This particular brand, of course, we got several quotes, but it's flock safety is a system that we would likely uh utilize. If that year is up and we find out, hey, there is no continuation grant. The uh, Department of Motor Vehicles is not going to continue this process any further. Once that contract ends, they come, they pick up their cameras because they do still own those cameras. This is a subscription service. They pick up their poles and they leave. There's no additional charge.
Okay.
The cost for this system right here, these twelve ALPRs and the trailer. Next year, if we had no grant funding, would be thirty six thousand dollars.
Thirty six per year.
Yes, sir. Now that does include more than just the product, right? That includes the training, the software, maintenance, firmware updates. If one were to be damaged, it gets put back up.
So much larger.
Uh, I'm sure they only do that for so many units, you know, they're trying to make some profit as well. But it does come with protections for those items. Um. As well as everything.
So the year by year rental is about thirty six thousand.
That's correct.
For the.
Twelve, in this case.
The hardware itself.
Yes, sir.
So the other part of the seventy six is the uh installation process.
Yes, sir.
Training and that's right. So the entire unit itself, we didn't, we don't own any of it.
We don't own any of this, yes, sir.
And the other key aspect which is is mentioned is it gives us access, allows us to plug into the real time crime.
That's right. Flock safety and the program that they have is the most utilized in the entire nation. And they are competitive. I'm I'm not trying to give them a kick here. Hey, look, this is a great company. But they have the most expansive view. So for instance, uh, just the other day, something happened up in the northwest Oregon area. And that vehicle got hit in our region and because we have such a representative representative section of ALPRs. They were able to track that information, send it to the investigators that were needed. In that original jurisdiction and they worked together to come to a conclusion on that case. That is something that is also provided. Now, it would be remiss not to mention that. Is that interconnectivity, that web of connecting.
Nation wide, not just state wide.
Exactly right.
What about the set, the cellular services? Is that also included in the process?
Everything that that camera needs to do to in, you receive data and upload data, it's all included. There is no additional cell service. There's no additional solar panel. There's no additional electricity. Everything that that camera functions and does what they say it's going to do as long as we're a subscriber member.
Any costs associated with the application?
Uh, yes, the application is free if we're denied. Uh, or if we don't make the cut, uh, we have no obligation. Only obligation we have payment wise is to match what they provide.
Mr. Carruth, would that come out of police budget or? You know, fine.
But the the this grant will come uh come about next fiscal year. So this would be a budgeted item.
Okay. Out of the police grant, uh, police budget, then?
Correct.
Okay.
You don't see any issue with that. Well, um, it will work into the budget for next year. Um. In worst case, uh, he has four picture files that we can plug into. I can't argue.
Any other questions? Yeah, thank you, Marshall.
Thank you.
No other questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Pro Tim Canitas.
Aye.
Councilmember Holmes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gay. Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item ten, deliberate an act to authorize the issuance of a request for proposals for auditing services.
Make a motion with deliberate an act to authorize the issuance of a request for proposals for auditing services.
That.
A motion in a second to deliberate an act to authorize the issuance of a request for proposals for auditing services. On the questions, Lamar. Yep, either one.
Lamar.
Okay. Uh, Mayor, Council, uh. Wathen DeShawn DeYounger was the first city auditor. Their last audit, they presumed to be all a couple weeks back. Was their fifth and final uh audit under the previous contract. So now, uh, as their contract is expired, I'm asking uh permission to uh request bids for a new city auditor. There's nothing prohibiting the current or Wathen DeShawn from bidding again, but it sums up to uh all various auditing.
Lamar, were they originally a three year with a two year extension?
That's how this one would be proposed as well. Yes, sir.
Okay, you have the option to to back out in the next two years. But it'll be for a three year term.
Correct.
With a additional two year.
Two one year options, yes.
Two one year options. Last time we went out, uh, how many? How many bid proposals did they? What came back, do you remember?
We had, I want to say four, but one of them was uh late, so it didn't count.
Okay. So this is just asking to be able to go out and bid.
Correct. Okay. Gather the results to a former audit review committee and get. And evaluate the bids and present at the council the recommendation.
Uh, Mr. Ozley, is this the audit that takes place at the end of the fiscal year for the entire year?
That is correct. Yes, it's the cities are part of it. Audit every year and so this will be that sort of this. And there's the city auditor reports directly to city council. Make that very clear.
Any other question? No questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Pro Tim Canitas.
Aye.
Councilmember Holmes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gay. Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item eleven, deliberate an act on ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh nine approving an extension of the moratorium on game room applications.
Make a motion with deliberate an act on ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh nine.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I think Ray got it.
Yes.
We have a motion in a second to deliberate an act on ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh nine approving the extension of the moratorium on game room applications. Onto the question. Mr. Carruth, I'm assuming we're doing this because of the proposal legislation. Are we gonna wait on that?
It's part of it. Well, there's a couple of balls up in the air.
Okay.
Uh, you recall back in uh, it was November, the council instituted a six month moratorium. Um, because we were getting overrun by applications for new game rooms. Uh, when it was passed, we had. Uh, six game rooms already operating and two were already in the permitting process. Um. And right now we have have all those. And there's one uh that's renovating its space and has not opened yet. Since that time, uh, we. And they, well, last month, last month, we had. A fire marshal and police department conducted inspections and. Uh, some of the game rooms, uh, three of them. But the ones that are on that table there were inspected. And they. Had multiple violations which resulted in their revocation of their gaming permits. All three of them appealed the revocations to the appeal board. And the board upheld their permanent revocations on April twenty ninth. So. Uh, that leaves us with. Four operating game rooms, one more waiting to build out its uh space. So the last time we had a moratorium, which was January of twenty three. Uh, we had. Some game rooms that uh, or I have one, I guess it was just one game room, but their permit. Came up. For uh, technically renewed because each one is a SUP. It's only good for a year. So they came up to do their. A new, a new application. And at that time, council extended their. Per existing permit. Until such time as council uh decided that they're going to do a moratorium. Uh. And Marshall can jump in here, uh, revise the license application that we've been in. Dialogue with the Jefferson County officials determining what their stance is going to be on prosecutions. Violation with uh existing statutes. Um, the divisions that cities Beaumont and Orange have and uh, in the case of Orange. And with Beaumont, they're in the process of updating ordinances. They're. I think in the case of Orange, they they outlaw them basically. And the expectation, I think, in Beaumont is they're going to make them very, very strong or outright uh outlaw them there as well. So between what the legislature has running through the processes there and. Uh, not knowing exactly where uh Jefferson County is is going to land on their prosecution stance. Uh, we think that from the staff's recommendation is that we extend the moratorium. Um. Until these play out. And we have more definition. Uh, the current legislative session goes for a couple more weeks. And uh, don't know exactly when, Marshall, if you have more information about. Where the county is, I'm there, they're thinking. Uh, but that will probably dissolve fairly soon, do you think?
I hope so, but you know, when you mentioned there's a lot of balls bouncing around right now at the same time in different courts, some are waiting for legislators. Some are waiting for an appeal board. Some are waiting on seeing what other cities are going to do based on what they are seeing. Uh, in the process. So there's a, there's a Fort Worth case. That was appealed and the the three port Texans said, no, everything looks good to us. There's another one specific to an organization called PISAMatic. And theirs doesn't quite fit the definition of the state for uh a gambling item. It's a more skill based, solely skill based. And it also doesn't fit the definition for a a redemption machine. So there's just so many different things happening all at once. Um. We actually have a case on the district attorney's desk right now. Getting some of his team reviewing it, looking into a specific brand. To see, is it solely skill based or is there some algorithms underneath that pseudo random? Which would buy some form of the answer. Um, so just a lot of things going on at once. Uh, we hope to have some word uh from the DA's office on whether they uh. They feel that this particular one that we're dealing with is a crime or not. Until they decide, yes, this is prosecutable or no, what the state's doing right now, really not prosecutable at this time. Just kind of wait.
So we really have two questions. For council's consideration, one is, uh, do you want to extend? The moratorium? And two, if you mean, we have a couple of the existing permits. That will come due during. Well, depending on how long you want to extend moratorium, you extend it six months. There are. Uh, three. I think three of these existing permits will come due during that. Six month extension. So do you want to extend those? Permits as it came out like you did last time, or just let them run out and no rules or exceptions? Permits as it came out like you did last time, or just let them run out and no rules or exceptions?
I don't remember what we did with the fees when we extended. Uh the one game room last time.
I think we basically just held them in abeyment until such time that we open our applications back up again.
But at that point, they were liable, they were able to operate for four or six months without. Did we go back and do the the full fee? At the.
Yes, at the time that we registered them and their application was submitted, they did pay the full fee at that time.
It was just the one game room.
So their specific use would be backdated to the original date. And they paid the the entire full amount for that.
Let's come on, did we do that? Did we backdate it? I'm not sure that we backdated it, but I do think they paid the full.
They paid a full fee for the next twelve years or twelve months, but so whatever they operated during that time, we didn't collect any of those fees.
That's correct.
I don't want to do that this time. That is my, my, my opinion here, is no matter what, we should collect the fees for it, they're gonna stay open, they still owe us the money. So if we can either do it where their original specific use date is the date going forward. And we backdate the permit to that, to that date?
We can do that just in the administration of issuing the permit, no problem with that.
So their their original anniversary date would be the date moving forward.
Yes.
Yeah.
But if you do that, and they don't do another application. I think they might need to do it.
Mr. Carruth.
I I don't quite follow what you're saying.
So. You're you're, which all our challenges is. When they make their, their next yearly specific use permit, when they apply, it's backdated. When it, the first one was gonna end. What if they don't reapply in six months? When you want six months and no payment. So you would have to do some sort of monthly fee or?
Do they, do they all come out to a different time period timeframe, I'm assuming? So can we just, can we make it where the fee that's due is the amount to the end of the moratorium?
Yes.
So let's say it's June, they'd they'd have to, they'd have to pay five months to keep their permit active for the extension. And then when they renewed in. Whenever the moratorium ends.
Then they'll do a full year.
Then they would pay the rest of the year, or you could reset their date for the day, the new time. Either way, they don't get to operate for free.
Yeah.
That is my suggestion, it's nothing's free.
Second, yeah, I agree.
Uh does that, does that gonna require a change of the ordinance here? Question mark.
Think we can approve this and then administer it that way.
Okay, the, the, the actual. Details don't need to be in the ordinance of how the fees are gonna be adopted.
We did not set forth those uh specifics in the ordinance as it was drafted, so there's nothing that we need to change there.
So this is an extension of six months.
Well.
For the moratorium, and then we're gonna enforce it. For a prorated to the end of the six month moratorium for all permits that need to be extended through the period of the.
Right.
I think, if I'm understanding, last eighty four says until the moratorium ends, so. Up to six months is what we have on this, we're declaring six months. And only six months.
Well, we would have to extend it again at that time.
But we can't say six months now and then stop the moratorium, is am I?
We can stop at any time.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, yeah, that language was intended to say, well, let's say we come up with the uh change to the ordinance that we like. At which time the or the moratorium could end at that point.
And then they've already repaid, so they just add that, or you just credit that back to them for their extension. So the enforcement of it, we don't need to modify, we just need to extend it.
Right.
If that's council's wish.
Right.
Okay. Any other question? Is everybody okay with the, the enforcement of it? The prorate to the end of the ex- moratorium extension? Uh the only thing that wouldn't be captured would be the specific use permit fee, in which since they're not applying for one, I think that's probably okay.
What about the application fee? You just wanna charge per, the price per machine? So we're not doing that.
Well, we can't receive applications, so I don't think you can get that either.
Prices for the machines.
Yeah. And then we'll get the other two fees when they actually get to fill out the application for their. And the specific use. So this will be the operating cost, not the application cost. Everybody agree with that? Any other questions? Just to clarify, where this is a six month extension of the game room moratorium. No other questions, vote on the motion, mayor votes a, Mayor Pro Tim Canitas. Councilmember Holmes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gay. Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Do we, do we have to put in some resolution or ordinance for the announcement of that? I don't think so.
Item twelve deliberate an act on the May sixth twenty twenty five invoice list.
Celebrate your act on the May sixth twenty twenty five invoice list.
Second motion.
A motion in second, deliberate an act on the May sixth twenty twenty five invoice list, is it May sixth?
I'm sorry, May twelfth.
Is it May twelfth? I think it's May twelfth.
Um.
Even need to amend that.
Then you're just have a date.
Let's change the date.
I meant, I meant my emotions deliberate net on the May twelfth twenty twenty five invoices.
Great.
A second.
So I have a motion in second for the amended motion to deliberate an act on the May twelfth twenty twenty five invoice list. On the question. Mr. Cruz.
Hey, there's. So why I'm just like, the first one is absolute insulation. Thirty four thousand six hundred fifty six dollars fifty cents, this is for the spray insulation to the ceiling that they actively building. Canadian Industries, Hall of Water Plant, thirty five thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and forty cents. P S W, Micro solve, uh which is a, the wastewater plant. So six thousand five hundred fifty dollars. Hit by sleep management, lease payments for March and April, twenty three thousand two hundred sixty two dollars and forty three cents. Ethic engineering. So the SCADA system, one hundred and three thousand four hundred twenty five dollars and seventy two cents. L V A for wild water in April, twenty four thousand nine hundred forty two dollars and fifteen cents. Mooji Brothers, annual maintenance of maintenance on the. A chlorine system. Seven thousand eight hundred seventy four dollars and twelve cents, hub solutions. Replacement of the high service pump. And installation, eleven thousand dollars, sales before. Uh two checks, one for fourteen thousand seventy seven dollar and ten cents, we had fifteen thousand one hundred thirteen dollar and twelve cents. This is for. Two new patrol cars that. From the lease program with Enterprise, but we bought. The equipment to go with. Uh normally, we're able to. Uh take stuff off the old units and reuse them on the new units, except when there's. Uh in this case, where we had kind of a double way where we had the unity. Uh camera system, which is new, and wasn't compatible, and then you had a change in the. Um uh inside of the. Um. Inside of the unit, the compartment, so the things just didn't physically fit inside, so we had to buy all this stuff. Uh there was Southern Car, Carmark uh inventory of tires at the garage, five thousand seventy nine dollars and sixty three cents. A grand total of two hundred and two thousand one hundred twenty nine dollars and seventeen cents.
Mr. Caruth, on the, the uh parts for the patrol units, um. Enterprise is gonna install those things, or?
Now, we, we hired somebody to install for us.
The uh. The, the stuff we took it out, the, the new, the, did we get to keep the old stuff?
Oh, yes, sir.
And it can be used on any of the, if something breaks on one of the existing patrol cars?
Yes, yes, yeah. The, the ones that were decommissioned, if you will, they're sort of utilizing their own CID capacity. But of course, as we switch to this lease system, you know, of course, that's still up for debate or decision. But with these two specific ones, we know that we're not gonna keep these vehicles long term, not ours, releasing them for a time, and then. One day, they're gonna have to turn around and take them. Those pieces are ours, so those we can then incorporate into a new one. The problem is, is we decommission our oldest fleet. And then the time period between that and these new leased vehicles, the parts just, they're not compatible.
Yeah.
But yes, we still have the old computer, the old, I'm sorry, the old explorers and the equipment that came out of those.
So you have new explorers, they're not different vehicles.
That's right, they're explorers.
Okay.
Well, the configuration of the cabin is different than the news.
Right.
From the old.
Yeah, just the model year change.
Yes, sir.
Brandon, you have something on?
No, those, those dollar amounts were captured in a budget, a fine budget item or?
Yes, we knew going in, yes, sir.
Okay, that's.
Uh the G L O grant, the second payment, uh. How close are they to finishing that project?
First way on parts. They finished their project and just, they've ordered everything, um this is, I think it's the second payment of five.
Five payments, okay. There's what, uh one? Was it one point two?
Uh that.
That was for the entire thing, not just this SCADA thing.
Level five hundred.
Okay.
SCADA system, that's for wash water and wastewater.
Okay.
So that's coming out of that, that grant money?
Yes, the twenty twenty one grant money?
Yes.
So they really haven't done the, any install yet?
They've installed quite a bit, it's just they're waiting on the final parts, like for the towers and the, and the radio units.
Okay. And no. Guest medical, when? That means you don't have to.
No, I can't, I couldn't tell you that.
Okay.
That spray insulation, was that, that's on the inside or?
Yes, correct.
And that was a budget that I'm on, wasn't it? Yes.
We did add to it the last minute, um a um. Let's seal it, uh if you will, with added an R factor as well as a flame retardant. Um when they're about halfway through, we spray insulation by itself. Um did not look very good at all just by itself. Uh so we coated, had coated this uh. I forgot what they call it. Radiobear, uh it did add a, a slight additional R factor to the insulation, but it was also a flame retardant. So.
All right. Any other questions? No other questions, vote on the motion, mayor votes a, Mayor Pro Tim Canitas.
Aye.
Councilmember Holmes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gay. Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item fourteen, city holding executive, or city council holding executive session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one of the Texas government code in accordance. With the authority contained in. Section five five one point zero seven one, one A, consultation with attorney when the government body seeks the advice of its attorney about pending. Or contemplated litigation. Section five five one point zero seven two deliberations about real property. And that's it. So we will adjourn into executive session at five forty six. Um.
Yeah.
I'll look for this.
The.
It's.
Later.
All right. Hour fifteen, councilman comments?
Well, she's no longer here, but I wanted to congratulate the mother of the year. But now you still go back and look at the video.
It'll be on boardings for life. Yeah. Or at least three times. Any other councilman comments? They're being done. We will adjourn this meeting at six thirty one and forty two seconds.
Don't come to me now.
I say that.
We didn't say that. That's different. Okay, then all of them.
With that, want to redo a few things. We want to.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Like then, yeah. We were out of town, so I'm excited. We were out of town, so I'm excited.
Much food, everybody inside is trying to. They won't say something, but I can't because she's taking off. I would say, I want you to say that you feel something was stupid in.
Karen Torres, nice to meet you.
Hi, guys.
Y'all have fun.
All right, so everybody ready to get rolling? No, I'm hoping to start a little bit earlier, but uh. Here we are, um. Before we get officially started, uh, Letha was acting president, um, or was the president of the EDC prior to the new appointments. So, uh, expectation is she'll continue in that role. So she'll technically run this meeting and discuss that once we get into the workshop. So when you're ready to start.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order at six thirty five.
And we're gonna go down the items on the agenda if you're gonna wonder how how this rolls.
Again, okay, could y'all stand please and work for you have the prayer and in the pledge? Heavenly Father, we come to you this tonight with Thanksgiving and praise. We thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve our community in this capacity. We only ask that you reveal to us what your plans are so that we can. We can advocate for those plans for our city because you know what's best. We ask that you you be with us, you guide us and lead us as you're the ultimate counselor, Lord. May everything we do be pleasing to you. And in the ways that we go about have helping our city, that we don't have our own agenda, but but yours, Lord, because you know what's best. We thank you for your grace and your mercy and for your forgiveness and your holy name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. You wanna be real?
If it mouse?
Here.
Eric Heitz?
Here.
Kirk Pelosi, it's here. Ben Lofton?
Here.
Chad Garrett?
Here.
May Hal?
Here.
Melissa Hoyer? Welcome, guys, to our guests and the media. So, asked for citizen comments?
Yeah, I do have a citizen comments. Nothing from the peanut cup.
Okay, now we'll move on, um, this is a workshop, so there'll be no action taken tonight, this is just for discussion. I created a couple of handouts for y'all, this is the big fancy one, and then if y'all wanna take notes, here's one to take notes. How are we all like? I sent y'all all an email with a whole bunch of attachments, I'm sure you've read and memorized all of them. So if you haven't, that's okay. But this is, uh, the agenda of the workshop session that we'll walk through tonight. Um, this is to get us familiar with how the meetings work, what the goals and objectives of the EDCs are and what rules we have to live within as far as our role as the economic development. And for the y'all don't know, this is Brandon Monk, he is the city attorney, but he's also engaged as the EDC attorney. Little helper. Guide us when we start getting off. Hard to know where you're going?
Yeah.
If you don't know where you've been, um, so with quick history, the Economic Development Sales Tax was created by the. State of Texas in nineteen eighty nine and expanded in nineteen ninety one. If anybody's really interested in reading the law, the actual stuff that they write that says how all this works. Uh, local government code chapters five oh one to five oh seven cover economic development corporations. Groves is a type B organization, and so that's mainly addressed in section five oh five. Six hundred communities throughout the great state of Texas have an EDC. Um, and actually, there's within those six hundred, there's eight hundred EDCs. Now, the question is, how is that possible? Let's not, that map that drive, well, some communities have two EDCs, a type A and a type B at the same time. Groves began the process in nineteen ninety four to start the, uh, creating an EDC and it was finalized in ninety six. The main purpose back in ninety six when they created EDC was to create a financing vehicle to fund the, uh, construction of the wastewater plant. And then we started doing the smaller grants for businesses in approximately two thousand. I say approximately because I'm not exactly sure what the exact date when they passed the version. But our EDC does have a lot of bylaws. Bylaw were passed here to you now, um, and those were the original bylaws that were created. Back in ninety six and we have the authority to make recommendations to update those bylaws. If we want to, uh, change them ourselves, I'm not exactly sure the process, if we haven't done it here before, I don't know if they need to go in front of council or not. I think they do.
Yes.
So let me make sure we're clear on one thing, EDC has a lot of discretion on a lot of items. But the final authority still rests with the city council. They're gonna set the budget, they're gonna set what we can spend money on and how much we can spend. Then within that purview and within some other limitations, uh, y'all, we will have the discretion on how to spend those months, mainly for the grades. But before we get into that stuff, uh. Y'all are the be appointed board of the EDC, congratulations. The board has officers and they have to be, the board will pick their own officers. Um, so there's four that are required, and then if y'all wanna make more, we can make more at a later time, but there's a president, a vice president, a secretary and a treasurer. So at some point in the very near future, we need to take a vote and nominate. Y'all to one of these offices. Um, they're all spelled out in the bylaws about what's required with which, but basically the president and the secretary. Can only be the president and the secretary. The vice president and the treasurer role can be combined in one person. And if there's any other roles that y'all seek that to create, we can combine those into one person as well. But as the rules of the bylaws are written, those are the minimums. The president has a lot of work to do leading the meetings. Um, I'm here to assist on the executive director officially, um, I work for the city of Groves, I'm Lamar Osley, I'm the finance director. But I'm also the EDC director, so I have to take care of a lot of the paperwork and all this stuff organized. Um, I report to Mr. Caruth behind me, the city manager, um, so I'm not gonna. A lot of the stuff I do, I work with him to make sure we're doing it right as far as the city's concerned. And he has a lot of experience with economic development, so we're absolutely gonna use him as a resource. But we're gonna need to make these temporary nominations for these, well, temporary. These nominations for your positions on the board probably at the next meeting. But officially, according to the bylaws, we're gonna have the official appointments at the end of the fiscal year, fiscal year runs October through September. So at the last meeting in September, we're gonna make nominations for the next fiscal year for who has what offices. The same person can hold the office for two consecutive years and only two consecutive years, and then there'll be some turnover. So if y'all remain on the board, whoever's president, it's Miss Canous, she can be appointed for next year, that'll be her second year, but after that, she has to roll on. And then one, someone else will be nominated to be president. One other thing, the conflict of interest is addressed in the bylaws. If the, uh, something comes up, the grant or some other action item that y'all have a con- a conflict of interest in. It's on y'all, because I don't know everybody's ins and outs, but it's up to y'all to. You can choose to recuse yourself or at least abstain, y'all can discuss it, but if the vote comes up. You're expected to at least abstain, not recuse yourself completely from the item. All right? In other words, if you have a business grant, your business is had a grant in. You're welcome to participate in the discussion, but you're not supposed to vote. Okay, that's a quality of the business. All right. Texas Open Meetings Act, that's a fun read, but we are subject to this law. Um, it means the agendas will be posted seventy two hours before the meeting occurs. Um, there's two required spots physically, there's a bulletin board right here outside the council chamber that it has to be posted on, and there's a bulletin board in inside city hall. It also needs to be posted on the inter- internet if it's available, and I believe it is available. I have to disclose that, yeah, there are maybe emergency meetings, EDC is really not gonna have a lot of emergency meetings. City council might be facing a hurricane or whatever else is happening. Um, we keep the minutes, um, and recordings. We do record the meetings, um, so congratulations, y'all are on video forever. We do have, uh, as we just experienced, we can have executive sessions. Which just means we have to go to a private room if we're discussing certain very specific items, and only those items can be discussed in private. Usually requires somebody with Mr. Monk's skills, um, legal type items that aren't to be discussed publicly. Um, those are all spelled out very clearly what is and is not allowed. Unless we're just gonna be buying or selling real estate, I don't think we're gonna have a whole lot of reason to even consider going to the executive session. Kind of fair statement, Mr. Monk. There are seven of y'all, so there's four people is a quarrel. So understand that if four of y'all gather outside of a public meeting, outside of a public notice. There is a risk of violating the Open Meetings Act. But if it's just social, you're just hanging out and you're not talking about EDC business, then there's not a problem. It's to keep people from gathering outside and making plans outside of public, outside of public. So be aware of those items. Walking forum forums is also a similar thing, that's where we start playing the telephone game. I'll call you, say, hey, vote this way, I'll call you, say, hey, vote that way, I'll call you, that's. Not all at once, we're not all on the same phone call, but it's the exact same thing, that's not allowed.
Also, I think with answering back to the emails, we need to.
Yes, absolutely, uh, if there, if the question goes out. Be careful of the reply alls, uh, on your emails, so if a question goes out regarding EDC business. That could come up for discussion at 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 a meeting. You can reply like individually, but if you hit that reply all button, or at least four of y'all, then you're, could be a risk for violating. So be safe and sorry, just don't do it, just reply back to the center, don't reply all, so. Safe way to do your business. Now, the good news is there's not a. Open meetings police that walk around and monitor everything we do every day, but there are people who pay attention. And I'd rather, rather be above board and transparent than risk forcing someone else to come in and have to correct. Okay. The bylaws for the meeting, say, we, the board members already have a constituted form, we already talked about that. If we wanna pass an item, whatever it is, has to be four affirmative votes. So if there's only four people at the meeting, there's a forum, four people vote aye or yes, it passes. If there's seven, it only takes four ayes for it to pass. Proper decorum is expected, we'll be polite, we'll be professional, we're gonna operate under Robert's rules, which I mentioned here in a second, all right, there's right there. Uh, which spells out certain procedures that we have to follow, which means we'll put an item out, say, hey, we're gonna talk about this grant for ABC company. And if one person says, uh, as a public, I blew, I didn't language right. I move that we discuss the grant for ABC business, so if somebody seconds it, and then you're allowed to discuss it at that point. If no one puts the initial nomination out, or no one seconds it, then it dies, can't talk about it, and we move on to the next one. Little things like that. You see it on TV, it looks pretty neat on C-SPAN and all that, we'll do our best if you have questions, but I would. Basically ask everybody to be courteous, wait your turn, so the president is in charge of managing the meeting, she'll call on you. But if you have a question or a comment, it will all take turns. Try to be professional, courteous. We've had issues with that in the past, I hope we've learned from our, uh, errors of our ways and will probably do better going forward. Uh, I've learned as well, and, uh, if things start getting a little warm, I might ask that we. Take a quick, uh, adjournment for a recess, so we cool off before we gather together, but I'm sure we'll never get to those type of situations. Be courteous, we're all here, volunteer in our kind, we witness the veterans in the city, let's keep that in mind. At the meetings, if something's not listed on the agenda, we can't discuss it. We're gonna talk about just the item on the agenda. If you wanna talk about whatever, at the end of the meeting, you'll have a chance to make comments. It's not supposed to be a discussion, it's just comments, hey, I wanna talk about, we're having a con festival coming up, y'all throw up. Hey, we had a good article in the newspaper, things like that. It's not action items like, you know. We need to do this for that person, stuff like that, it's just more comments. We have, uh, uh, a section in here for citizen comments that we just went through on the agenda. Citizens can come up here and say whatever they wanna say within certain decors as well. But I'm all for having the the public comment. But as a board, y'all can just listen to those comments, you can't really interact. You're very limited on, you know, they'll come in there and say, what are you gonna do about this, what are you gonna do about this, whatever it may be. You are limited to giving what I lay out here. You are allowed to give a statement of facts. You can have a discussion to put it on a fu- future agenda, not the, not what the item's about, but let's discuss when we can put it on the future agenda, only like we can put it on the next. Next month or whatever you wanna do, or we can recite with the existing policies. That's it, it's not, oh, that's a great idea, or that idea is not very good. None of that, it's, these are the things you have to stick to when someone's coming up here and saying, hey, I wanna talk about. You know, dogs run amazin' streets or whatever they want. These are the replies the board can answer. All right, that's most of the procedures, y'all have questions about that or anything, I'm going through this kind of quick, but I'm not sure if I want to stay till eight o'clock either. Okay, y'all feel free to contact me anytime y'all want, if you have other questions about that, we'll work through it as well. But now let's talk about what we're really here for, what EDC really does. EDC gets revenue from the sales tax, the sales tax is one and a half percent from Groves. One percent goes to the city, half a percent goes to the EDC. We've had a good run these last few years, we've been averaging. Two point seven to three million dollars sales tax, so. Two point seven to three million dollars sales tax, so EDC gets a third of that. So that's why I put nine hundred thousand within the average over the past five years, and the trend has been going up. Really good. Y'all recall, there was a time when there was a Walmart and Super K market here. They left, guess what, sales tax. It collapses, it got tight. But we've been chipping away at that, coming back, and we're thrilled that it's over three million dollars as it is last year. So what can we do with this money? Well. We have, uh, the city. Utilized the EDC to buy a new fire station. The city issued ten million dollars with the bonds to build up a new fire station, and a new, partially of a new fire truck. It's being paid for with EDC funds. Though as the EDC financed the wastewater plant, it's now financing the fire station. That average, that annual ticket for that bond payment is five hundred and eighty-two thousand. So of your nine hundred thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty-two is already. Already spent for you. So okay, that's one piece of it. I'll skip the, the grant part in a second. This past two years, I think it was, or at least this past year for sure. The city council, again, I said this earlier, sets the EDC budget. City council set a transfer of two hundred and twenty-five thousand from EDC to the city. And that's to cover various costs, as if the EDC was a standalone business. EDC was standalone, they could have their own building, they have their own staff, they have their own utilities, they have their own payroll, I have their own, all that stuff throughout the business. It was decided that two twenty-five was the number. They may change their mind this upcoming budget, they may increase it, they may decrease. That's up to council. So to keep the math easy, assume that number's two twenty, and the annual debt payment is five eighty. That gets you eight hundred thousand-ish. So eight hundred thousand of nine hundred thousand. Is already called for. Recognizing that council might decide to do something different with the admin fee, bond, that ain't team. That's gonna be what it is for the next seventeen years. So. Roundabouts about a hundred thousand dollars. We've been averaging fifty thousand dollars in grants to the businesses and growths over the last few years. Maybe up to a hundred thousand, and then things get kinda tight at that point. We're supposed to operate on a balanced budget, so how much money comes in should equal how much money is going down. Now, we do have a fund balance, fund balance means savings account, for lack of a better term. And if we have reason to, with certain permissions from city council, we can go into that fund balance. That's about, ooh, one point four, one point five million dollars off the top of my head. Uh, I'd have to double check that right off, but it's in that range, that's a savings account. Think of it as a rainy day fund perhaps, but it's dedicated just to EDC business. That's, I don't see us going into that anytime soon, but council may say they want to, who knows? So in other words, we have about a hundred thousand dollars, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars in grants. That's gonna be the primary role of this board, is how do we wanna take care of those grants? We have forms that were enclosed in the email, and little spread, uh, little sheet lays out what the planning can't be spent on. And how those reimbursements are calculated. Let me be very clear on this. The grants that we entertain are reimbursement grants. They've already done the work, they have the receipts, and they say, I spent. Five thousand dollars on advertising, and here's the receipts, I spent five thousand dollars on painting my building, and here are the receipts. You can go buy, and I would encourage all of y'all when considering these things to go buy and take a look, did they do the work, is it real? And then it's up to y'all to decide if you wanna approve the grant or not, the grant is a reimbursement. Alright, we don't front money to people, we can, we have those options, if that's the route we wanna go down. Those are a lot more involved, when you front money to somebody, you're going to have some performance requirements that you're gonna, they're gonna have to sign a document saying, I'm going to have. Three full-time people, I am going to do this, that, or the other. And we have to go back after the fact and say, okay, we gave you ten thousand dollars, did you do what you said you were gonna do? If you did, great, no problem, if they didn't, you gotta claw back the money, that can get difficult. We just do the reimbursements, they've already done the work, it's there, we can see it. Here are the receipts. It ends up to a vote, y'all agree that it's done, alright, yay or nay, and that's how, that's how we've been doing it. Again, you're the board, we can have discussions, if there's something that y'all don't like, you do like, you wanna propose changes. Let's talk about it, let's get it out there, but I'm just giving you a brief synopsis of this is what we do, this is how we do it. So. Let's quickly into future activities. The next meeting is, what's the memorial, twenty-seventh?
The twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, Tuesday? Okay, couple of things. The EDC meetings have been scheduled to follow the council meetings, their last meeting of each month. Um, which is usually Mondays, which in this case with the following Memorial Day, so they're pushing it to Tuesday, so our next meeting will be. Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, after the council meeting, totally doesn't last till six thirty, but it is what it is. One of the things we can put on the agenda is if we wanna change the time into the date. It's, y'all, y'all are the board, y'all can set the time and date, if y'all would like to. Uh, I would encourage that we still have it here, so we can have it videoed and all done correctly, but again. If y'all are the board, we can figure out a way to get this all set up if we need to. But if y'all have a better time or date that y'all would like to start looking at. That would be the meeting to discuss. I know we all like being here at seven o'clock at night, but it is what it is. So, um, I might, if I might be so bold, I'd probably put that on the next agenda for discussion.
So, yeah.
We add something when we do.
Great question, um, the short answer is, you can ask me, as executive director, you can ask the president. Or if two board members wanna put it on the agenda, they can. I don't have a repartee, I'll just be, I'll be honest with all y'all, probably more than y'all want me to be. I'll tell you, yes, I can, I think that's a good idea, we'll put it on there, or no, and I'll tell you why I think it's a bad idea. That doesn't mean it's dead, you can still ask the president or have two council members on there. I have. No problem with most everything on there. If there's legal reasons or anything like that, I'll be happy to discuss it with any y'all on the one about what the problem is. Or you can talk to Mr. Monk as well, if you have legal questions like that. But if you want someone on the agenda, the general, the general thing is email me, call me, say, hey, I'd like to talk about this in the next weeks. And I'll say, great, or I need to check something, I'll get back to you, or I'll say, I know it's a bad idea because, thanks. Whatever it is. But yeah, let me know if y'all want something on there, we'll put it on there, I'm happy to get it out there and discuss. I've given y'all all the rules and the things we can do, recognize the financial limitations we're under, and. I'm sure sales tax is gonna continue to keep going up, but there's not a lot of wiggle room. After that debt payment and that advent.
We could get, uh, Chick-fil-A to open up on Sunday.
I think that's perfectly reasonable, perfectly reasonable.
That's what brought the, the sales guys, though.
Yes, um. I think they may have something to do with it.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm gonna do my best to not get specific to any one business in these areas, but. Yeah, we'd be full of ourselves if we didn't, I think, maybe might have something to do with it. Fair enough, yes. Um, but other things we have to do, um, at the next meeting, uh, we'll need to at least elect. Officers until the next fiscal year, so start thinking about that.
Does that need to be an agenda item, or is that already kind of?
I'm gonna make it a agenda item, yeah, it's all spelled out. Um, and if anybody, you know, to put their name forward for that. Be ready to, to offer that, otherwise, you know, make it volunteer patterns.
You can volunteer or get voluntold.
Um, there's not a whole lot, uh, that is involved with each position, um. Basically, the president's gonna run the meetings, the vice president and the absence of the president will run the meeting. Secretary is going to assist with the minutes. Um, the treasurer will work with me on the finances, and, um. Y'all are gonna get the finances every meeting anyway, about how much we have, how much we received, how much we spent, where I think we're gonna be. As, i- if everything stopped today, what I think will be at the end of the. It's not very complicated, it's just, okay, we started with, taking number two million dollars, spent fifty thousand dollars. We brought in a hundred thousand dollars, and now we're gonna be two million fifty thousand, so we're good. This will, and it'll spell out where the expenditure is reported. I'll show you all that kinda stuff, I'll show you the history of sales tax and those type of things. Uh, we'll discuss various, uh, economic indicators, like, I don't know, thousand point blue in the Dow today was kinda nice. See if that keeps happening, oh. Interest rates, see. We need to get clear on what is and isn't eligible for grant reimbursements. I do have one question pending that I'll put on the next agenda for discussion. Don't think it'd be appropriate for me to bring me, bring it up at this point, but as a meeting, I'll bring up the item that's in doubt. Recognize it's a lot of it already spelled out in that grant application, but I wanna get y'all's feedback before I clean that up and say, this is the two thousand fourteen. Two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Grants, um, and then we'll keep doing that each year for each fiscal year going forward, as things may evolve. Or we just copy and paste from the previous year, and we're happy with that. We can look to revise the bylaws if needed, so please take a moment to review those and see if we're needing to add, delete, edit. Any of those that y'all see fit, that might be something we wanna wait a meeting or two to see how things flow. Before we attack something, cuz that's kind of a bigger item. And then one thing that we have been very poor in doing is developing an annual work plan. This is in the bylaws, this is required by the bylaws, what we're supposed to do, we, the board is supposed to do. We are supposed to develop some goals and objectives for this board every year. At, at the beginning of the year, and at the end of the year, we're gonna go back and grade ourselves, how did we do, did we eat, seed, or. Not exceed those expectations. And then we're supposed to give that feedback to council. That's set out in the bylaws. We haven't done it in the past, we need to start doing it. Gives us all a little motive, a, a goal to all what's worked towards, goals, or all worked towards. And I have some ideas, but I would like for y'all to get some ideas as well, of what those goals may be. Um, so we can draft at least a short-term goals and objectives before the end of the fiscal year. And then we'll have a little bit more in-depth one for the new fiscal. And then at the end of that fiscal year, and into this fiscal year, we'll look back and say, how did we do? Alright, and that is EDC in a. Thirty-five minute. Uh, dialogue basically, but please, this is the workshop, we can talk freely, we can ask questions, we can discuss whatever it is you wanna discuss.
Yeah, the, the amounts for the grant, fifteen thousand total, and there's.
Various categories within.
Categories under, is that set by the state, or is that something?
You're looking at this, that's it, now there are certain rules, that if like in one area is over ten thousand dollars, we're supposed to go to council with. But all the grant categories are to be, they're designed to stay under ten thousand per by category.
Now, just curious, uh.
It's on a fiscal year.
As people had them find for the grants, is that, has that been a reasonable amount of money? To reimburse them, or is it just a small, small percentage of?
It depends on who you ask, uh, some people are thrilled, and some people, it's. Not very much, it's the minimum amount. We, we had Hannah Hotel who came in and applied, I think it was a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars with the eligible expenses.
Okay.
And we were able to give them seventy-five hundred. Which, you know, can we afford to give them a hundred and twenty-five? No, so there's a, we have to find that, that meeting. But if it's over ten thousand dollars. For whatever category it is, that is required to go in front of councils as well. So keep that in mind, I'm not saying they're gonna vote no on it, but they have to still vote yes as well before that goes out.
But we did wanna change that, or sure, that would be an agenda item.
And, and doing that, I, I feel like also, we need to consider the other things. That we could be offering to help with, with maybe capital campaigns, things like that, such as the water. Uh, infrastructure, such as, uh, the streets, things like that, there are things that we're allowed to. Um, to help with. Other than just those grants, yes, I, I'm. The director of the Chamber of Commerce, I, I'm gonna advocate for my businesses to get grants, absolutely. But I also, serving as president. Of this organization with the EDC, I have a strong conviction for helping the city out. And, and getting things that need to be done within our infrastructure, so when considering. Revamping or making any changes to those. Those amounts that are already in place, please keep in mind those other items that we can. We have the opportunity to help out with and help our city.
Here's a hypothetical. This, this board thinks it's a good idea to, it's a mouth on the head of the class. To issue six million dollars with the bonds to help pay for the wastewater plant rehab. That's gonna run roughly four hundred thousand dollars, it's really off the cuff math. So this board can say, we wanna drop the admin fee, and we wanna drop the grants. And with some rounding, that gets us four hundred thousand plus the five eighty, gives us pretty close to a million dollars. That's pretty much all the EDC can do, but if this board decides that's what they wanna do, they'll make a recommendation. To the city council, say, hey, we'd like EDC, you know, we would like the city to, to rehab the wastewater. And the city will say, well, it's gonna cost. Ten million dollars, take a number, so EDC is capable of financing up to six. And at that point, you say, okay, well, whatever excess revenues above the first bond payment, we wanna apply to the second. That's something y'all can discuss and, and ask. And council can decide if they wanna do that, or that's up to y'all. Y'all, but y'all can decide, we want it for the wastewater plant, we want it for water or sewer pipes, whatever it may be. That's up to y'all. Um, or we can keep doing what we've been doing, and that's, that's nothing wrong with that, or some, something in between. We won't, don't wanna do six hundred or four hundred thousand dollars, we only wanna do a hundred and fifty thousand, whatever it may be. This is what we have, this is what you can suggest, and council can take your, take it under advisement, and they can adjust the budget when it comes up accordingly. And they say, yeah, it's a great idea, we wanna issue these bonds, and we'll take whatever EDC is willing to contribute.
So that two hundred twenty-five thousand, is it was a negotiable item, it's something we could propose to see.
That's right.
If we wanna change it.
That's correct. Council makes it a sit, council makes the final decision, they may say, oh, no, two twenty-five is not enough, we wanna bump it up to four hundred, whatever. They're the city council, they're the ones that are elected, they're the ones that have to live with their decision, they make the call. We can make recommendations.
Reassurance.
What good question.
Well, I just had the one other question, I called you earlier about the Zoom.
Yes, uh, I talked to, uh, or help me Lance, who is our. IT, uh, Zoom guy. Y'all know Lance, I'm gonna joke, but anyway. Recently moved up to the sixty-four color crayon pack. And our fire too. Uh, but he handles the Zoom meetings, he says, yes, we can get you a phone number to dial in on, and we'll put you on that little. Whatever, three-pronged saucer thing, and you'll be on the, uh, your voice will be heard. Um, but as I understand from the Open Meetings Act, you aren't allowed to vote. Correct, you're allowed to participate, say what you wanna say, but you can't vote, you have to be present.
Just so that y'all know, I've got two planned vacations in the next two months, both occurred. One with meetings.
Or at the next meeting, we change the dates, who knows? Or at the next meeting, we change the dates, who knows?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, no, I was just saying, you know, we have. Basically, point five percent of the tax revenue, some tax revenue is what we initially had to work with, we got. A large part that already allocated, locked in, you know, essentially, um, we have. Up to, you said a hundred thousand dollars, so we're basically functioning at, you know, ten percent capacity of what E D C is fully capable of. Which means that we really have to be conscious of, I think, the money that goes out and. What sort of return is actually going to bring an impact on this sales tax number, so. I don't know much about the water infrastructure thing, I think you mentioned it, um, you know, before, and. Um, but are we able to see as far as like this administrative fee, kind of how that breaks down and? Why is it two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, is it necessary?
I gave the answer, that's because that's what council thinks it ought to be, that's the short of it.
Okay.
There's no real breakout of saying this part is for this, this part for that, the thing, the, the thought during the discussion when they said it. Is what would it cost the E D C to have a standalone business all by itself? And they went through some, thumb in the air, okay, they have to have a building, building's gonna have. No, I guess it wouldn't have property tax, but it's gonna have utility, it's gonna have insurance, it's gonna have staff, it's gonna have supplies, that, this. And that's what they backed into.
So then since the E C is paying for this building.
In one, in the sense that that's what the E D C would have to pay if it was all by itself.
So.
A share. Share.
So if we were to prepare a proposal for, or, or a suggestion for a different fee, we would need to support that and back it up with some sort of. Something, if, like, hey, this is, you know, if we were to try to, you know, suggest any sort of change to that.
Sure, yeah. And also understand there is a fund balance. Uh, by nature, I'm encouraged to stay away from it, but it's there, and if that's what y'all think we want, need to dip into for whatever. Project, or whatever the item is that we want to discuss, you know, there's. One point four, one point five million dollars to sit in there, turning interest, but it's sitting there, um. If y'all decide that's what we need for whatever it may be. And again, please read through some of the information that was on that email, there's a lot of stuff this E D C did. Now, some things just aren't practical because you don't have it, it's like buying and building a business park. We really don't have a lot of open space to do that.
You know, one more, like, one more forward fund out, or, or to say, and that's just. Money that wasn't used in previous years, it's just been.
Absolutely. And basically, there is a gap where the payments for the wastewater plant ended. And the wastewater plant ended, and then the fire station started. But there's, where that money came from, it's those years in between that they didn't have that large annual payment goal.
But also keep in mind that, that is not the only, that was just an example that we used hypothetically as well, but, but there's, there's other. Capital projects that we could, we could help with and take on, and that's something we can discuss.
Mm-hmm.
Further as a group and, and make, you know, decisions what we want to propose to do.
Do we have it stated what the actual balance, like, not in the fund balance, but in the actual, like, in the checking, not the same thing, sort of? Or does everything go directly? So, okay.
And I did bring a sheet, but I'll be happy to email you the one I, I sent out last month, it breaks out. You know, showing by month, how much money comes in, how much money goes out, and those two, kind of gives you projected ending balance.
Well, let's assume that we tied up one hundred percent of E D C funds in these, uh, other things, and we basically had nothing to go to, and we did related with grants.
E D C's only required to meet once a year.
Um, is there anything in the bylaws that states that we couldn't go into the, the fund? Um, to approve a grant, say, like, if we don't have.
If it's within the budget, the city council approves.
Thank you.
That makes sense.
Yes.
Oh, wait, you say if it's in the budget, so it would be something that would be approved for next year?
Correct, we're about to begin the budget process on the city side, we're gonna, not just for the E D C, but for everything.
But throughout the city, we'd propose using some of that one point four million, it would always be for the next budgeting cycle.
No, we can actually do amendments in, inside the same year, can do amendments. Absolutely, but generally speaking, we'd like to have it planned out, but if something comes up that's hot and heavy and we need to act quick. There's nothing that says we can't, they don't have to say yes, mind you, but doesn't mean we can't propose it.
And remember that it's September. When we start making those decisions, or we do make those decisions for the, the.
Come September, we'll have a pretty good idea what council's gonna set for the budget.
Yeah, and then the same for us, that's the prime opportunity for us to propose anything that we're.
Let me, I'll be there.
Yeah.
I would say July would probably be a better time to start gathering what we would like to see in the next fiscal year budget for the.
To have it ready for September, right?
Because they're gonna be voting on it in August.
Oh, okay.
And everything is hopefully signed, sealed, and delivered by September, so when we have that meeting, you know, I'm not, I'm just. If we have that meeting at the end of September, it needs to be done.
Yeah.
And so at that point, we'll already have an idea what council has allocated for our budget.
Okay.
And then it's our idea, how do we want to next? If we're here, if we're still setting a budget in late September, I'm gonna lose even more hair. And it's gonna be a rough, rough time, we'll get through it one way or the other. So, you know, we don't have a whole lot of time on our calendars as it is. We're not limited to one meeting a year or one meeting a month, we can have as many meetings as the board wants to have. Now, there's a process that follows a special meeting, and again, if me or the president or two board members can ask to have a special. If something comes up, it needs to get done, we can have more workshops as well, about whatever subjects we want to talk about. Um, and then the regular business meetings will be, here's the agenda, here's the item, we're gonna talk about a lot more formal structure type of stuff. I'll email y'all as soon as I get out of here, uh, the financials for last month, and, uh. Yeah, this last page, current activities, that's, it's not the prettiest breakdown of the finances, but that tells you more or less where we are financially. What we're, uh, with how much money we have available. So please review the stuff, uh, if you have questions, feel free to call me directly. Free to call Miss Canals, we're free to call Miss Karu, whatever you'd like to do, we'd be happy to discuss it with you, come in, say hi. Yell at me, throw things at me, whatever you want to do, we can talk about it one way or the other. Um, I'm all for getting all this out and above and transparent and clear to everybody, the more y'all understand. Easier it is for everyone. One thing that I have to do, and I'm going to encourage president to do. And y'all are absolutely welcome to do. I think I attached that as a.
Yes, it's an.
Is it in there?
Yeah.
One of the fancy dancy training sessions, as the executive director. I am required to go to one of these every year. I would encourage the president go as well, because I may be absent, I might hit max six numbers and go dancing out of here, or I might get canned, who knows? But in the meantime, we have to have someone by law who's on to one of these to, uh, help facilitate all our meetings. Y'all are more than welcome to do that, uh, the dates are laid out, this T E D C website is outstanding. Lots of good resources there, um. We will, uh, if there's a cost to it, uh, and I'm looking to go to the November, or the Houston one in November. I would think Miss Canals wants to go as well, might even carpool, who knows? Um, but I will come to you for permission to go to that first. Um, if there's a cost to attend, I'll disclose the cost of registration, I'll give you an estimate on the mileage per diem. And say, hey, we want to go, um, for the fourteenth, it's gonna cost us two hundred dollars, or whatever it ends up being. Y'all can see, vote yea or nay on that, and then we go or we don't go, but I would strongly encourage that we get to go. But I have talked to the E D C, uh, this Carlton Schwab guy who signed it at the bottom, he's the director of. E D C about coming down and doing a presentation directly to y'all. Same as a train, um, like they just do here. He said it's fifteen hundred dollars plus expenses, basically, he's my living meals and hotels, else. And that'd be the cost if he wanted to present it to us, and I don't know if this would be the year to do, but it's something I would like to seriously think about. And not just have it corrupt, but maybe invite Port Neches and Nederland and Port Arthur and whomever else might be interested in coming and slip the cost out. Then it might become a little bit easier to swallow. Um, and I think it would serve all of us really well to have that type of, uh, more candid discussion. Versus a room of two hundred people. We don't think we have two hundred people come here, I don't know where we put them, but either way. But, and I'm sure his costs will adjust with inflation, but last year it was twenty, fifteen hundred dollars plus.
One day training or multi-day?
One day, I probably come down the night before, give my guess, and it'd be a whole day.
Mm-hmm.
Something I just want to get y'all to think about. But regardless, I still have to go to the training, I'd encourage president, go to the training and whoever. Next year, do the same thing. And again, all y'all are welcome to go as well, if you would like, to any one of you would like, but it's the same process, if you want to go to the one in loving. Richardson, better choice, um. Uh, you've come in the meeting prior to and say, I want to attend the training in Richardson, it's gonna cost this. And it'd be an agenda item, you vote yea or nay, and, okay, that would decide it, if y'all want to go. So, those are the trainings, lots of information, I've already emailed you, lots of information on this T V D C website as well, um. And lots of constraints on the money we have available, to be honest with you. But we do have monies available that can help businesses, can help the city, so, um, so. It's, it's something we're gonna have to address and consider, and. I'll help you all any way I can, I can't give you the answers, but I can give you the information. No, I did that a little longer, sorry, guys, bye. All right, anything else, any other questions? Uh. On this page, you have everybody's contact information. One page you have my contact information, so, so don't be shocked, I think I even have Mr. Monk's in there somewhere, yeah. And don't be shy, if you have questions, ask.
One, uh, one question I do have, since we're gonna be doing this next meeting with the electionary officers, uh, if we. Should we, we're interested in a certain post, do we email you about it, do we talk to the president, do we? Send one email, say, hey, you're interested in this, and nobody reply, or how do we, how do we handle that?
Usually do that at the meeting, don't we?
Usually it's discussed at the meeting, it's what you have offered at the meeting, say, hey, you know, I'm the best treasurer in the West. And, and council, and then the board will probably say, you're hired, that's fine.
I've got this big dollar sign chain, I've been wanting to wear some.
If we want to modify the bylaws and have a certain dress code, we can do that. Yeah, again, don't be shy with questions, the more y'all know, the more you understand, the better it is for all of us. There is a lot that can be done, but. We're limited right now, but then we think, things can change. All right, so think dates, what likes? The, the, the third Monday of every month, or, you know, at eight in the morning, or whatever the heck y'all want to do. What times work best for y'all? And you can set those up, it doesn't have to be at seven thirty in the evening on. Second Monday of every month. Um, think about officer roles, there's a brief description in the bylaws about what each officer is required to do. Start thinking about budget and what kind of ideas and projects y'all would like to pursue. That's a bigger picture, and it doesn't have to be answered quickly, um, and more short term about how we want to. Update the guidelines for the grants that we look to offer to the businesses. To be clear, sales tax paying businesses are customers that we issue the grants to. As we have it right now, nonprofits are not eligible. If we want to change that, we, we can be, that can be discussed, but that's already been voted on by a prior E D C board, and they voted. That no, nonprofits aren't eligible for these type of things. It's basically, if they're gonna pay sales tax in the state and to us, then they're eligible. So, anything else? Can I drag it out any longer at all? All right, Madam President, um, what else is on the agenda?
Roger.
Item eight, E E D C member comments, and at each meeting, y'all have the opportunity to make any comments of mine. To each other or to the, to the audience.
We're just, looking forward to serving the citizens of Groves and the businesses, uh, in our city, and. Hopefully, we can all collectively come together and put some, you know, good ideas out there that we can act on and, um, yeah. See, uh, positive change over this term.
Well, so, looking forward to it. Okay, we will adjourn this meeting at seven twenty-eight with forty-four seconds.
Thank you so much.